All right. Dr. Stoll, when you're ready?
Okay. All right, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call to order the Westlake City Schools Board of Education meeting, work session for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. A roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Stoll.
Here.
Kraft. Fanukin.
Here.
Lozinski.
Here.
Kierna.
Here.
Okay, we can now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. And next up is I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Kraft.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Kierna.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Motion carries.
First item is a board discussion item on the Dover campus traffic.
I could take that.
Dr. Gagen, do you want to take that?
I will do that. Let me share my screen. So I can see, make sure I get this right. Be able to.
It's working.
There. See what happens. Okay, can you guys see? Okay. Liz and Bob, can you see?
Yes, yes, it's working very well.
Okay. All right, so I do want to take some time and go through this information with the board and talk about some of our potential solutions that we have. So let's just talk about, get rolling with this Dover, the Dover campus traffic flow. This is not a new topic to the board. The district has worked to develop multiple designs. Since we've decided to raise Dover Elementary School, we went through multiple layouts last year. Maybe that's mine. We have discussed them publicly in our board meetings, a lot of conversations about the different ways we can do it. The designs we, we looked at, multiple designs. And in regard to vehicle traffic, we had some designs that would bring all vehicle, vehicle traffic, which would be parents dropping off students. We had some designs where all of the traffic would come in off Dover Center. We had other designs that would have all of the traffic coming in off Bassett. Essentially, we did not settle on a new traffic design in, in previous conversations. Here's what we learned. So we went into this year and we went through and we did take down Dover Elementary School during this academic school year. And in doing so, in that process, decided to reroute the traffic from the front part, which is Dover Center, and have it run through Bassett Elementary. The biggest takeaway that we would have with this is the, the one entrance concept did not work. And actually, we had multiple designs, like I said before, that had a single entrance either coming in off Dover Center or a single entrance coming in off Bassett Road. This unbalanced approach made traffic worse, and it was bad, and the traffic was, was bad on that road. And here's an example, when we talk about the traffic coming in one site. So our first one hundred cars, so we opened, we, we started letting families drop off car, car riders in the morning at seven fifteen AM. That used to be seven thirty-five, it used to be seven thirty-five. So we went twenty minutes early and had students start dropping, getting dropped off at seven fifteen AM. And what we found is between seven fifteen AM and seven thirty-eight AM, about a hundred students would get dropped off, twenty-three minute span, and, and that's, that's not as bad about what, four, four cars, four point something cars per minute. However, with the schools starting at seven fifty AM, you saw the next hundred cars come through between seven thirty-eight AM and seven forty-six AM. So now you have a hundred cars coming in, trying to get onto the campus in eight minutes, and that's dramatically different. And whether we did that on Bassett Road or Dover Center Road, it would really be a significant issue because Bassett Road is really not conducive to widening, widening if we said we wanted to widen that road. And Dover Center Road really isn't that conducive to widening as well, because a little bit to north of Creek, you have some issues with, with doing that as well. So when we, but when we look at just what we have, there's a significant issue, even when we have queuing on the site and be able to pull as many cars as we can off the public roads, with one entrance, no matter how we slice it, we're probably going to end up having a significant problem. So we've had a lot of conversations about when the building was, the campus was being redesigned and the newly Bernison Middle School was being constructed. And then what the original intent of traffic patterns were. There's, there's different sides, different conversations, different perspectives in, in what happened in two thousand and eleven. It's, it's a tough one to talk about because there, there are people who are convinced that it was indicated that there was never supposed to be any traffic coming off Bassett Road. There are some people convinced that there were, and, and so there, so I don't want to turn and say that I don't know what, I don't know what conversations happened. So we went back and looked at documentation. And so we, we had our internal documents already where we had traffic pattern plans, we had traffic study, we had communications between principals and parents from the opening of the schools. And so we were able to see that a lot of those designs match. We then received, you know, acquired planning commission meetings from May sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, and June sixth, two thousand and eleven. And during those meetings, there were the public conversations about the traffic patterns that were being proposed for the Dover Campus. So we're able to have a record and be able to go through and see the conversations that happened. We were able to see public comment from some of the people who either lived on Bassett or an adjacent subdivision, and to be able to go through and look at that. And the other thing that was interesting, it, it was when you look at, and I, and I put the legend in, if you look in the center there, that is, I'll show you the MKC traffic pattern that was developed on May thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, right in between the May sixteenth meeting and the June sixth meeting. So you will, if, if you look at that document on May sixteenth, you'll see reference to the traffic study that we have, I think done by TMS engineers. And, and then in the June sixth, you'll see reference to the, the redesigned traffic pattern, which was done in May thirty-first. So it, it kind of lines up to where we say, okay, this is what they talked about on May sixteenth. This is a subsequent traffic pattern design, and then here's a follow-up conversation on June sixth. So in reviewing that information, there, there are some things that, that, when, when I reviewed these, that became clear. One is that the Dover Center entrance is designed to be the primary, the main entrance. And when you actually look at the May sixteenth, it, it states in here, I'll quote with it, "The main entrance will be from the east side of the building facing Dover Center, but there will also be an entrance on the west side of the building for access from the Bassett Road Drive." But the sentence clearly states in there, which also makes sense too, and it's something we like, is if you have a traffic light, you have a road like Dover Center, which it is the center of Dover, center of West, so it's right in the center of town. And, and it is the main entrance through there. So that's number one, is that it is accurate that Dover Center entrance is designed to be the front. In the traffic patterns that I'll show you in a second from MKC back in two thousand and eleven, subsequently, both bus and vehicle traffic were intended to come in, come to the campus from Dover Center. The second one is that the Bassett, Bassett entrance was designed for vehicle traffic. Now, I'll quickly go to my third point, which is the intent was vehicle traffic. There are, whether it's our traffic study or our plans that I'll show you in a moment, or even conversations in these planning commission meetings, our traffic study, the conclusions state there will be no bus traffic. So it clearly states on there indicating that that's what we were looking at from there. And the, a couple of things that you would notice is that, looking at, if I was to take the May sixteen, it states in here, there will, there will be a new driveway entering the site from Bassett Road, but this driveway will only be used for AM drop-off and PM pickup vehicle traffic to the new school during certain hours. So one of the things that's clear is that the conversations that happened was, like I said in the beginning, Dover's going to be the front. You're going to primarily bring in your buses and vehicles off of Dover Center. Bassett Road will bring in cars, but a lot of the conversation is around bringing cars, but it should be limited to where it indicates in here only for AM, PM. And then it even, it even goes on to say at all other times, there'll be a series of four locked gates across Bassett to prohibit traffic. So it was pretty clear as we look at the, the notes from, from these meetings, that those, those are the three big takeaways that I, that I got from there. And then I mentioned a moment ago, the gates to prevent flow from outside of those times. So those are the big takeaways. Now, what I want to do is I want to get into a proposal, but I also want to be careful in how I'm talking about this because I want to make sure that anybody watching understands that this conversation, one of the things that this Board of Education always has done, is we have conversations publicly. We, we truly sit together and talk through things. Sometimes when that happens, people are going to take everything we're saying right now for fact. And what we are doing is we are having a conversation. So the information that we are sharing, it is a proposal, and the drawings that I'm going to share are conceptual. The components of this proposal can change prior to the final design and actual construction. So we may, and I'll, and I'll point out some items as I, as I go through some of these. And there are still steps to be taken between this conversation and a final project. So just so folks understand, this is what we want to do, but you know, twenty years from now, I don't, don't want, like someone coming back and saying, hey, look at, you know, fifteen minutes into the December fourteen, or the December, the June fourteenth board meeting when the superintendent said XYZ, we are talking about a proposal that's going on, and, and just want to be clear with that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to escape this, and hopefully I can navigate quickly to the MKC design. So this is, when I referred to before, there was a design, and I could show you that this was the design where I pulled the legend from on that previous slide.
Dr. Gagen.
What? Ah, didn't go.
No, you'll have to share your screen again.
Okay, let me stop. Sure. Thank you for that. And let me reshare. Let's see. Well, well, let me, all right. Might be hard for me to go back and forth, but we shall see. Okay, thank you for that. So as you see on here, this is the, I took a screenshot of this, and this was, let's see if I can complete this, so I can get more access here. So this is the legend from this, and, and this was completed between the, the May sixteenth planning commission meeting and the June sixth. So this was completed on May thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, or submitted, and on that date. And when we go through, you're going to see that the hyphenated lines that are listed are going to be color-coded by building, and they're going to be for bus travel. So when you look up, there'll be a, a building that's red, there'll be one that's orange, there'll be one that's blue, and the hyphenated lines designate bus traffic, and the solid lines designate their parent traffic. So as we go through the MKC document, I'm going to go through you overall, see if this, does that work? Okay, okay. So I'm using a touchscreen to try and zoom in and zoom out, so I don't want people to get too dizzy while, while they're watching that. The first thing that I want to point out is this. So the first. Hold on a second. See if it lets me do this. Okay, good. So the first thing I want to point out is this. There are two arteries, one, two, and I'll call them two primary arteries to this campus. Because for the conversation, you can argue that there was a third one here for Dover Elementary Buses, but Dover Elementary School is really not in this conversation anymore. So I'm, I'm not going to focus very much on Dover Elementary School as we go through this. But for the majority of the cars, the majority of the buses, we have two primary arteries. And it's one off Dover Center and one off Bassett Road. Now, I'm going to start with the fronts, and there's a couple of different things that I'm going to focus on. I'm going to do something right away, just to hopefully bring some clarity, but I want to do it together so I don't confuse people. This building right here that it says Lee Bernison Middle School, at the time, it was Lee Bernison Middle School, but it is now Dover Intermediate School. So I will refer it to, to it as DIS as we're going through this. This is no longer the new middle school. This is now Lee Bernison Middle School. Okay, so people can get their bearings on, on what we're looking at. So this was created back when this was being constructed. So our Lee Bernison Middle School is now our intermediate school, and then the new middle school is now Lee Bernison Middle School. Okay, so we have that. Now, what I want to focus on first is this entrance area right here. So this is at the time what they considered for Dover Intermediate School, okay? So there's a couple of different, so the, the path that, that was originally drawn for Dover Intermediate School had parents pulling in and dropping off and then leaving. Okay, that, that was the, the path that was there. Now, while we talk about the entryways, we also talk about the amount of cars that we can hold on campus. The queuing area for here was about twenty cars, about eighteen to twenty cars is what it was. When you, if you count from right here to the drop-off area right there, you're only going to get about eighteen to twenty cars, which is not very much, because you figure you have probably five hundred students, classes of two fifty, two sixty in, inside those buildings, but I'll call it five hundred, you're able to fit twenty cars up front. Then also up front, you had this loop, and the orange is color-coded as Lee Bernison. So then you had this Lee Bernison loop to where the actual drop-off, when you look at the actual queuing area that you would have, that path would probably give you about twenty-five more cars. Okay? So up front, you're probably looking at forty-five to fifty cars that can be queued up in that area with those two, with those two drop-off zones. Now, also in this drawing, if we switch back and, and then we look at the back part, let me go through here. So the drop-off back, or the, the the queuing that we have here, what we would have is parents would pull in and then follow along this area, and then go around, drop off, and then leave. So if you count the queuing area, let's say up to here, you're probably looking at an additional seventy-two cars. Okay? That you would be able to, to put in the back part. So when you look at this particular design at the time, and I'm not even counting Dover Elementary School, and there's a reason for it, and a couple of reasons for it. Number one, it's gone, so it's not something we're considering, but even at the time, it ran a different schedule. So you typically didn't have the middle school, intermediate school, and elementary school people fighting for the same area. So you're probably, I don't know, you're probably looking at pulling off about a hundred and twenty-two cars off public roads with this design and having two arteries. Okay, so two of the arteries that would come through. So when we go to the next proposal, when we look at what we want to propose for a solution, here's what we have. Let's see here. How do I? Oh, no, I don't want to leave the meeting. All right. So here's the first thing I'll start with on this proposal. Well, here's one thing that I want to point out immediately. And that is the only, there's only two construction changes that we'd be looking at in the new design. So we would be running almost the exact same model that we had from two thousand and eleven, except we would want to add a turn here and then this bus parking area. Those would be the, the changes that, that we would make. Let me erase this. So let me get rid of those. Let me start with just doing a quick overview to what the, the first difference, and one is balancing this site and creating multiple arteries. So in here, you would keep from before this same entrance way, so there's one. Then you would keep from before this same entrance way here, which is two. And then you would have this third entrance way, which is three. So now what you're doing is you're, you're, you're opening up more space and you're splitting. So one of the big things we always want to do is keep car traffic and bus traffic separate. And we achieve that. So in essence, when you look back at this original MKC plan, the only difference that you're going to see is you're continuing to bring part of the car traffic in off Dover Center. You're continuing to bring part of the car traffic in off of Bassett Road. But you're taking this space where Dover Elementary is, and quite frankly, we're using this curb cut because we left that in place. We did close this one. So we closed that curb cut, but we left that one in place, and we're utilizing this space to, to separate the buses. So this area here where we have buses can now be used for cars. All right, and I'll go through that. So the, the changes are not very significant between what was originally designed. And we have a benefit that the people who designed this back in two thousand and eleven didn't have. And, and that's the, the availability of land in that curb cut where Dover Elementary School is, because that no longer is there. So they had to plan for Dover, Dover Elementary School, we did not. We have that removed, so we get to utilize the space in the curb cut that already exists. So a couple of things that I want to go through is let's start off with that front loop as I described before. So you see a bunch of lines here, and, and one of the things that we, we did is we, we, we're going to look at architectural, but we're also going to look at procedural. So procedural, we are not fully, we don't, we don't know specifically what we're going to do yet. We're still working out some of those details, but we, we're trying to work on as many options as we can. So if, if we take this and say what we're going to do now is just have Dover Intermediate School use the front. So what happens is you'll have a, a parent driver in the morning pull in, and then they can follow. Now, before, they had utilized this inside parking area. And when they utilize the inside parking area, you'll see that the students would have to cross bus traffic. So the students would be dropped off in here, and they would be dropped off in this area here, and then would have to cross over and, and cross bus traffic, okay? In this scenario, what happens now is when a parent comes in, they now drop off this entire route up to this crosswalk. If they drop off here at Dover Elementary, or Dover Intermediate School, they are, the, the students, the, the drop-off is passenger side, which is where the student should be, and they're stepping off directly onto a sidewalk. And then even down here, they're doing the same thing, where they are getting out of the car on passenger side and stepping off right into a sidewalk. So, and then they would follow through and then pull out in this way. Now, you see these arrows up here, and one of the reasons for that is this is very similar to what we've done before, except here's the difference. So when we look at when, well, let me finish with this. So if we get into a situation where we're finding, if we run this and find out that we are still pushing too many cars out into Dover Center, we can decide to have the, the staff parking go over here and then line up cars where these purple lines are, and we can stack them. So we can have the cars come in, and when this fills up, we start to create these stacking lines and then progress them to go and pick up kids as, as these cars leave. Now, what that does is when we talked about the previous design with forty-five to fifty cars, this puts us in a position to have about ninety-five cars in this front area. So it significantly pulls or has the potential to pull more cars off of Dover Center. The other thing that I want to point out here, and I actually want to take a minute and I want to erase all this stuff, because this is another thing that we noticed when we were having conversations about this. And let me erase this area too here. It's nice to have this ability, but sometimes too many markings gets confusing. So when we look at the previous design that we had, I'm going to erase this stuff too. Here's a big area of concern, and it's right here. And if you look at that area and you think about the amount of activity that's happening there, let's look at that. So let me erase this, and let me, let me have you look at this for a second. So you have the folks pulling in to Dover Intermediate School, and they're coming in, and they're dropping off, and they're going out. Then you have the folks who are coming in and utilizing this parking lot and going in and dropping off. And then you have the buses that are coming in, who are going this way. And then you have the buses that are going out. So
It's a nightmare.
This.
Dr. Gagen, there's another scenario you forgot, which is a, a parent dropping off at DIS and then pulling through and driving on over to LBMS and dropping off.
Right, and, and so the, the amount of cars that actually intersect, and buses, I should say, that actually, and that does look like a mess there, and, but when you look at, and so when I erase it, and you actually look at all of those lines, and I wouldn't, and it's, I don't think it's fair to put, like I said, the, the light blue is Dover Elementary School, so I wouldn't consider that. But when you look at the lines that are intersecting just in this area, it's very significant. And when, when you look at the lines, if I was to zoom in here, now, this path here are for people who are pulling in, and they're going to utilize this parking lot. So that's not going to be the bulkier people pulling in. You know, and, and so that will be, you have a crossover there. And then if we have it set up where if some, if a parent pulls in and is able to drop off here, if we say, well, you could break off and just leave, you know, instead of having to follow this path in that second lane, then that would be an intersection there. But other than that, the majority of vehicles, there's no buses coming through, so you just eliminated two of them. The bus is coming in and the bus is going out. And in the path that you would take, dropping off in the intermediate school goes that way, and then when they leave, they don't cross over and they go that way. So it's a significant reduction also in some of that crossover in that area. Then the other point, oh, so I want to go and, and I, I want to talk about the bus loop. I actually wanted to talk about that first, but I could do it now. I can't change that now. So one of the things that we're looking at in, and that's important to us, is this bus loop. And so we would think that in the morning, we would hope that the buses can come in and drop off, and then they can time that, they can space themselves out enough to potentially not have to stack up. But if they do have to stack up, if this gets full, then they can line up in these spots and then be able to go over and drop off as, as they're going. And then in the afternoon, they would just come in and line up and wait for the students. I don't know, mine were just blank. They can wait for the students to come out. They can wait for the students to come out and then load. So the other thing that we talked about um with. This bus parking area. So we did meet with Bob Kelly, um, city engineer, and he's always incredibly helpful with this. And. This is one of those areas where I'd said that I, you know, this is proposal. So I don't know right now as we sit here today. Our thought was to have that potentially be a right turn only for our buses. Uh, because we would be concerned about either catching some of the traffic. As uh. Parents are pulling out. And also as um, when this light changes and the, this traffic goes that way. So. We, we are considering now we have to work with our. Uh, transportation director, Adam House, to make sure that's, you know, he may have another way to do it. That's going to work. But one of the things that Mr. Kelly brought up that I thought was really good, really. Good point is the city just did significant work at the corner of Dover and Center Ridge. Over the past couple of years. I mean, they took on that intersection and created a, a full. Right turning lane, a full left turning lane and full through lanes. So if we're going to route our buses a direction. That would be a place where when they got to that intersection, we'd be able to send them in different directions pretty efficiently. So. That's what we're looking at in here. When it comes to, and you'll notice again inside this design. We, we built in. Some different things we can do. Now, when we look at going back off of and bringing cars in. And let's say we brought middle school students in through Basset. And. They come in, we can keep them on the path that they did before and just have them follow through. And maybe that's enough. Maybe that's enough um queuing. But we also have it built in like we have now. Where if we need to um extend this, we do have the ability to do this. And this pulls off about fifty cars. And the reason for it is you're able to stack up cars both this way. And this way. So you're able to kind of double. The amount of uh, space that you have there. But it hasn't been, oops, that's the highlighter. We um, we haven't had to do that in the past. So going into um, next year, we're not sure. If we're actually going to need to utilize that particular area, but it's there if we, if we um. If we do need it. So what does that mean? What that means is that if we look at. Let's say we took all efficiencies in and let's say we stacked cars here in the, as we have in the purple. And let's say we utilize this area here. Um, that would. Uh, put us to ninety-five cars in the front. And the ability to, to stack up a hundred and twenty-four. In the back if we needed to. Again, I don't, I don't, we haven't needed that in the past, so I don't know if that's going to be something we're going to need. But it, this design not only um impacts the number of arteries that we're able to have for people to come into. The campus, but it also um. Uh, helps with our stacking as well. So. How about, let me see if I have anything else here. Buses are set for it. Any, can I, let me pause on designs because I have a lot more to go through. But I want to pause to where people have questions I can answer.
Uh, the morning, if I may, the mornings, even after we heard from residents on Basset. They knew we were working a long-term plan. They were asking for. Some immediate relief. Uh, by producing that south side of Lee Bernison and providing that additional loop. You had mentioned that in the morning, that that would leave the afternoon pickups. It wasn't relieving the AM, correct?
It was, no, you know what, you know what was, no, the, what was relieving the AM, what helped a little bit. Was when the buildings uh opened their buildings twenty minutes early.
And next year's schedule would permit. No issue regarding AM problems.
Not issue, it wouldn't, it wouldn't create issues.
Because I know that even if we engage in this plan. Um, construction of state of the bus zone. Wouldn't be complete in an ideal situation for San Antonio. My thought just being, especially since you just finished that. That we may want to embrace that right away. The idea of when I think about the drop off to DIS. Sounded like you had mentioned that they would. Parents would more than likely drop off at the far north. And uh, DIS.
Um, I have the drawing up.
In the parking lot of DIS, the northwest.
You're talking up here?
Correct. Is that what you said?
Well, here's what we would do. So the drop off, the, so when we just look at drop off. Now, we would probably go, because there's a side door here. The drop off, we would send people down. The drop off would be that.
Okay, so anywhere along there.
Anywhere along.
If, if you don't see that that's a problem in any way.
Well, that is, the designated spot would be from here to here. And the problem always is, uh, would be is that more people would want to drop off here. And so we'd have that someone kind of pushing people along.
I appreciate you going through the history. Uh, with planning, with city planning with regard to Basset. I think that clears up a lot of uh. Conversations that we wouldn't have. Any thoughts on special events?
Sure.
Because we've talked about drop off pickup.
Yeah, let me, let me get to that. Yeah, let, let's push that.
And uh. I, I believe on the uh Wesleyan Elementary School campus. You have stacked busing drop off.
We do.
And stacked busing pickup.
We do.
Okay, so that, that is, has been done before. It works pretty well. If you do that on a Dover campus, you can do it. We've done it before.
Yes.
With the third. Your third spot.
The bus. The bus.
Um, no, the, the old, the. The curb that we left at Dover.
Yes.
Okay, now that's. Cars, right?
Dover Elementary? Are you talking about Dover Elementary or Dover Intermediate?
Who, who's going to be picked up there? Who's going to use that? This, this third one, I thought you said DIS, but not.
So the. The, the buildings would use the existing entrances. So right here. Here's Dover Intermediate School. So we have Dover Intermediate School right here. This is our current entrance with the turning lane that goes this way and the light. So that's what that is. This would be uh. Parents and visitors.
To DIS.
To DIS, yeah.
Okay. So who would be at number three, the one that you're going?
This one here?
New one that will be.
This is this new one?
Yes.
Buses only.
This is buses.
Buses only.
Okay, so that's buses for both DIS and Lee Bernison.
Correct.
Okay, now what's to prevent? Are you going to get the kids across there safely without cars?
Let me get to that.
Okay.
That one, let me, I, I was pausing on the basic designs and then I was going to talk about pedestrians in a minute.
Okay.
I just didn't, there was just a lot that I was going through and I was drawing. I felt like I was, you know, John Madden designing a football play. You know, as I was going through it and I wanted to pause and I didn't want it to be. Too much. Okay. Should I go on? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Barb actually had one of mine questions. Which goes along with the, the student walking. What will prevent parents, and I know this is. Or another, what will prevent parents from using the bus drop off? Uh, in the front. Uh, and the difference between here and elementary is it's outside.
Right, it's a separation.
Yeah, you really need to make a concerted effort to go and use it. Here, uh, especially if somebody's dropping off before all the buses get there or even just a couple of buses. I can see someone sliding right in there. Get out. Zip back around and get out. So that, that's, that's a concern um that I would have. Now, for a student to get out and walk and all that stuff, so okay, but it may create a, a bad. Situation when buses start going in there and cars are doing it. So um, that was just one, one item that I had. On the DIS car stacking.
Yes.
This is a little, little complicated for me to.
Sure.
Together, but. The uh, oh no, go, go back.
I'm going to. Oh, Outmore?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought you were going specifically to the stack.
Going out. So the uh. The conversation you said was. The old bus turnaround loop, which is at the bottom of the screen.
Yes.
Um, more than likely isn't going to be needed. Because again, today it's not needed when it was being used, when the, the flow was what it used to be. So my question is, is. To get more cars off of versus the stacking there, which I got to tell you, would, would need somebody out there directing.
Correct.
Um, because it's, it'd be like getting out of the high school parking lot where everyone has to be nice and let one person out, one person in. Versus if we took advantage of that circle. Could be, and elongate the drop off to the circle. And then they, they out, go out the same way, or not the same way, but the way that it's there.
So a couple of things. Number one, when you look at your drop off zone. Um, that's past it. And number two, one of the things we're trying to do here. Is we also have to look at safe passage for our bus riders.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
To be able to come over here. And then if, if I extend this, now I'm creating.
I know, I was, I was creating my own problem.
Okay. That's right.
Unless there's going to be like a tunnel or a bridge or something.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, in, in today, when people pull in to do a drop off for their students. They're using the inside. And they're dropping off. They're dropping off right there.
Yes.
In the orange. Will that still be available for drop off?
No.
Okay, how are you going to prevent that?
Well, that's, there, there's a couple of different things. Now, one of the things you'll, that we know about. Any architectural design. Is it won't prevent people from breaking the rules. You know, it's.
We see that today.
Yeah, it, it's, it's something that in, in, in every location, you know, you do rely upon routine. You do rely upon. You know, the, the vast majority of people doing what they're supposed to be doing. Yeah, and, yeah, and, and so we would just have to work on that. I think for both. The bus drop off and that internal drop off as well.
Well. Um, I'll let you address it, but. If parents do that. Um, it, it creates again, the student safety. So I'll, I'll let you kind of get to that. But that was, those were mine. I, I think it's, I think it's a very good option. For us to be able to utilize this.
In, in the basic plan, what we like about it, it, it fits into the keep it simple. You know, where. Um, like I mentioned. The. When, so another thing we looked at that I didn't mention, I, I kind of mentioned it, but I, I'll be a little more specific with. Because we not only looked at the traffic flow and patterns that were originally used. Um, at the, on this campus when it first opened. But we even went back to last year, pre-pandemic, and then just over the past five years as well. And it really started becoming um more. Of the, the front being Dover Intermediate and the back being Lee Bernison. And, and the, the middle school. The way it works at times, and, and we kind, we see it in whether it's um. Parent involvement, volunteer activities, all those type of things. The older your, your kids get. The less likely the parent's going to be dropping the kid off and, and doing that because you have sports. So when we have fewer, I would, I would guess, I'm like, go through, I can go through, but, but traditionally. You have fewer car riders on a middle school level than you do an intermediate or elementary level. And, and when you look at the afternoon, uh, my elementary school, my intermediate school, they don't have the sanctioned sports. You know, but we have seventh grade volleyball, you know, seventh grade football, seventh grade.
You still have the car traffic, it's just spread out.
Yeah, and it, but it, but the, yeah, so it is, you're going to have cars that are coming, but I think you're going to have more cars in your five, six building than you are in your seven. So we, we saw it naturally progress to where um, it seemed like the intermediate. And, and we were seeing intermediate um use uh, the front and the middle school use the back because. A couple of other reasons with that as well. Is that when you look at the entrance, so when you um, uh, when, if, if intermediate families use the back. Okay, let's just erase this. And so if an intermediate family, right now they get dropped off here. They would have to walk down here and then along this back sidewalk and then around and over. So it's, it's a kind of a, a, a different kind of walk as opposed to getting dropped off here. And then just walking down the sidewalk in the front entrance or getting dropped off around here and walking in this entrance. So we really saw like a more natural progression to. Dover Intermediate was using the front. Lee Bernison was using the back. We knocked the world out of whack by saying everybody used the back. And, and that really um, uh, caused a lot of issues that we had.
Can we possibly? Give an incentive for more kids to ride the bus?
I honestly think next year it's going to work out because what was it? An additional two hundred and fifty kids were being driven versus we're. Buses?
So here's what we had and, and um. Um, let me look it up in a text here because I had it. So what we had was. Uh, this year. Traditionally or in the past. We would have um, twenty-one buses go to uh, the campus, the Dover campus. This year it went down to eighteen buses. Um, traditionally, we would put about forty-seven students on a bus. So we'd have forty-seven students. At, with, with twenty-one buses, which is about nine hundred and eighty-seven bus riders. Thanks for the math, Amanda. And um. This year, we obviously to keep kids more spread out, we had fewer students on the bus. So we would put thirty-five students on a bus. And we ran eighteen buses. So we went from busing like nine eighty-seven. Uh, to six thirty. And so, and, and those were, and that's a tricky number. Because when you look at that number, those, we didn't take a, a sheet and say how many people were on the bus every single day. Some of those nine eighty-seven could have been driven. You know, on some days or all days, you know, but the, this is who had indicated that they're going to be riding the bus. So we probably had. Um, when we subtracted our virtual students, we had about a hundred and fifteen students who were virtual. Obviously, we're not going to count them as car riders or bus riders. Um, we thought it was around two hundred and forty students, but then you start to factor in and say, well, we're not trying to say in any way that there were two hundred and forty additional cars. But were there? Forty, fifty extra cars, you know, uh, coming on campus uh, due to the, the, the fewer students riding bus rides. Ri- uh, by riding the bus or parent working from home and having the ability to do it. We're, we're comfortable in saying that we probably had about forty to fifty extra cars coming on this year.
And the reality is Barb, I mean, even with myself, with my daughter, there's days where I have to drive her because she can't take the bus with her cello. So especially any student with large instruments, they have to be driven on specific, driven and dropped off and picked up.
So um, do you want me to move on? You guys ready? You good with me going? Okay. All right, so let's look at the next thing that I want to look at and I may jump back to. If I jump back to my. So. Let me go back to. Uh, I'll wait since it's not. Uh I'll wait since it's not showing up anyway. Um so the next thing I wanna talk about. Is pedestrians and bike riders, so when you look at. The front of our campus is fairly developed with Dover Center being Dover Center and and there's sidewalks, lights, crosswalks, all of those type of things, so it's really been. Um uh a a place that has been developed. Now, in in two thousand seventeen, well, one of the things that we were noticing. Uh for our students who are going south, southwest. Um was prior to two thousand seventeen, they had to. The student would have to either walk or ride their bike and share the road with the drivers. Um that was something that really made us nervous and in an area that was of uh special concern was here. Um as you would have, you know, a student riding their bike and having cars come around the corner, they could be, you know, right or left, you know, they could they could be uh um off center some. That that's that was a a significant concern, so in two thousand seventeen, we did install a sidewalk. Uh that is um used every day and and so we have that situation. So the sidewalk is now there, but as we met with the city, some of the things that we talked about, um which. Was the uh ability to put a crosswalk in. And there was a willingness uh to add a crosswalk over here. Now, they have, they being the city, have certain guidelines they have to follow on where they could put a crosswalk, like in relation to someone's driveway. You can't just paint a crosswalk that goes up someone's driveway, I think it has to be about ten feet um away from it. We would like it to be on the same side as our sidewalk, so we wouldn't have, like if it was over here. Uh we wouldn't want students to cross, you know, from uh traffic coming in, but be able to utilize that right there. Uh the other idea that was brought up that we thought was a really good idea um that uh Mr. Kelly mentioned. Is the possibility of over right by here, by on Hilliard over by Clegg Park. Um there's those uh crossing walk, uh crosswalk uh signs that you push the button and it flashes. Just not all the time and all night, you know, so I don't want people to say, oh, my gosh, I don't want a flashing light. But when a student goes and and pushes the button, it's just another uh safety precaution, so a driver either coming around a corner or something would see that there's a flashing light. And a little more indication that there's somebody crossing, so again, something that we are looking at, that's something that we're exploring, an idea that we had.
A single crosswalk.
Yeah, have a crosswalk.
No, no additional crosswalk.
I don't think you, I don't think you need an additional.
Okay.
I don't know where.
For example, lead more.
They have crosswalks there that are going. Yeah, so there there are crosswalks, and so when you look at, I don't know if I could zoom in, I don't know if it'll show it being too pixelated. Uh but there should be like crosswalks.
Okay.
Going in this direction, yeah. Um so looking at the the crosswalk there and then um I'm trying to think. Let me go through in the lighted part there, so that that's a lot of of what we're looking at, but. When I go back to, and I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna come back here in a second. So I want to share this really quick, um jump back and zoom. Get in here, oops. Re-share this. So when I reshare this, um when I look at this proposal. Uh number one, a big theme that was taken away, uh Dover Center Road entrance is designed to be primary main entrance. With the proposal that I showed you tonight, um your D I S traffic, your visitor traffic and your bus traffic. All come in off of Dover Center. Um which is what you had here, both bus and vehicle traffic intended to come in from Dover. The number three with the intent of limiting the traffic there. One of the things that we have not done a good job with are those gates. Those gates are in place, they're manual now. One of the things, if you recall, when we and and actually, Mr. Kraft, when we were bringing up Westlake Elementary School. It made me think of uh the conversations we had with the folks on Westtown. And um uh Council Madano was fantastic, where he was a great liaison with the folks at Westtown. Um we had conversations, he brought concerns to us, we worked through it. And it made me think back because just in this situation too, Council Madano held a a listening session. And so we connected with him afterwards and we end up in conversations about uh Westtown and the elementary school and. One and I'm just picturing how frustrated we would be and how frustrated the folks on Westtown would be if we had manual gates there. Because I think we'd be going through the same thing there that we're going through here when we say we're gonna limit, we're gonna do these sort of things. And then you have the custodian is in charge, he's inside because, you know, there's a um a toilet overflowing or somebody threw up or, you know, whatever type of thing that he's dealing with inside. The building or someone's absent or uh you know, whatever whatever reasons why the the human error fault comes into play. But we didn't, we have automated gates there and and they maintain themselves unless they're broken. And and there's a a situation with that, so one of the things that if I translate that. To the Dover campus, you know, I'll just tell you, we have not been consistent with it. It is not something that when I look at this, I do believe that that, you know, we're gonna hold true to Dover Center being the front. I do believe we're going to um not push the the traffic again like we did there, but we have not done a good job with with um. Uh working those gates, so with that being said.
You have a question.
I do, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Um. As as relates to the gates, the there's really only one gate. That um is needed to prevent cut through traffic, and that's the one that's uh right by the bus turn on circle. Um that in the past has been pretty regularly blocked. That was just stated, and the second thing is. Do we know that we're having problems with cut through? As it pertains to, you know.
So.
The lack of utilization of the closing of the gates.
Well, here's what I would say is that. When it comes to, I also think it's it's creating patterns of behavior, Joe brought up special events, all right? And I and I promised I'd get back to that, so I I think it's it's creating that. Um pattern of behavior to where the the habit is when you go to the Dover campus, whether you're gonna go to a soccer game. Whether you're going to go to school, your primary entrance is Dover Center. And and it's in it, the the primary entrance would be Dover Center. Um to where that's.
And they're gonna be able to work their way all the way back.
It would work their way around at the back, they would have to go to the back. Um so then and and but let me show you what we have, because all they would do is. And and it's really not that big of a workaround, because when when you travel to other schools, it's, you know, when you pull in. And and so a bus pulls in, they'll know that they can, for after hours, they could pull in and then just go right back. I mean, it's not that crazy. Um but one of the things, just to to kind of talk about the gate situation. And this is another one of those that we would want to do um uh an automated gate here on Bassett. And right here, those two are big for us because when. One of the things our custodian deals with is when he closes one, by the time he gets to the other one and other cars coming through, then you gotta open it and, you know, you gotta do. Um all those type of uh things that you have to do, what?
What do you mean, do you mean by automated? It it automated underway.
No, no, so no, so what the what what the custodian does now, so let's say Rich, um he he starts here and he closes this gate. All right, and then he travels down here to close this gate. Well, by the time he gets to here, there could be two cars pulling in here and now they're stuck. And and so kind of dealing with those, and so it's really been, it's been really tough for everybody to manage, so one of the things that we would like to do. Now, again, this is, this falls into one of those things to where when we look at this gate down here. By Bassett Road, there are concerns, you know, can we get power to it, we, you know, we're gonna try and go in through um. Uh one of the light poles we have, or what kind of circuits it's on, you know, will. The automation system work that far from the building, you know, so we have, we have, we have things that we need to 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 go through to see if that would. Um benefit, but I but I think it's one that, you know, one of the things, when we talk about the narrative back in two thousand eleven. It's it's really clear that when we had conversations, we said we were gonna get it, now, can we can we say, well, we're not now? We said back then we're gonna get it and and I think that's, that's why I think it's important to to, you know, not, like I said, it's not like it's. Something that um uh we. Have to do, I think it's something we should.
So are we going to, and people were told like for sporting events. Because the high school lacrosse team used to play there and um.
Soccer still plays.
Soccer still plays there. Uh volleyball, we always went through the back and dropped off at that back infant, and that was what parents uh grandparents were encouraged to do, so. It's just a matter of retraining people, we don't use that back infant anymore.
Just drive around that, it's not that.
So we go in the front.
Just go to the front.
Okay, so but I mean that people were encouraged to use the back, this is what I'm saying, so it's just a matter of of reeducating them. We're gonna use the front from now on.
So do you have. How many gates are they gonna have to go through to make sure that they're open to get in there?
So what we would have is this, so this one, so really, what what, like if you're coming in the front?
Yeah.
One gate and and one of, and so. Our proposal, and again, we'll we'll, we gotta make sure all of these are feasible. Is to also have an automated gate there, but this one right here, we don't see any reason why that can't be standard, just a basic gate.
What you mean? Automated, I'm I'm thinking that if I'm in the parking lot and I'm I'm wanting to leave, it automatically opens for me.
Well, if you're, what it would do is it could do that, so let's talk about that.
Yeah, so that's where I'm.
So, yeah, so what would happen would be this, let's let's, so when we say automated. This is what it what we mean, we, I mean, and and again, that's why I have a conversation, proposal. Is that for those situations where, let's say, let's say you pull into this area. While the gate's up and while you're driving here, the time hits when the gates close and they close, what happens? Well, when you're inside here, the sensor will read you and and let you leave, all right? But it won't let you back in. And then so going this way, it'll let you leave, but coming in, it won't let you back in.
So the gates would be set on a timed schedule, so they would be open at a certain time and then they would close. And the sensor would only be useful if you got stuck in the middle.
So.
Because then there's no point of a gate if it just opens when you pull up to it.
Right, I I'm just thinking of. Visitors uh or staff, I'll just say staff that part of that. And I know a handful.
Okay.
That for whatever reason they have to leave in the middle of the day. They go out, gates shut.
They'd go up front, if you have to leave in the middle of the day, but but one of the things that it is, they'll be open for um for the amount of time where people are coming and going. Because that's one of the things that.
They'll be open during school hours.
Not during the day, but during drop off and pickup, so when people are coming to the school, when people are leaving the school. So if staff leave after school, they can utilize the gate because the gates will be open for the beginning of the school day, the end of the school day, but not during that midday.
So. Bassett basically will be related to drop off and pickup only. No special events, no entry, just drop off.
When I read the, and and again, this is something that when we talk about. When when I, if if I'm gonna make a statement and I'm gonna look at this and say, folks, I'm I'm. Uh what I'm reading is, is that, as I put on that slide, that Bassett Road. Is, you know, I'm reading in here and seeing all of our designs say that it is intended for us to bring cars in and drop off people. And then, but the other thing that I, the reason I put it on that slide is what it says on here. Is there will be a new driveway entering the site from Bassett Road, but this drive will only be used for AM drop off and PM pickup vehicle traffic. At all other times, there'll be a series of four locked gates uh across the Bassett Drive to prohibit traffic. And then it even says, it goes further. And it says, this entrance will not be used in the evening hours, during special events or during the middle of the day, and there will be no bus traffic on this drive. So that's why when I hear it's like, wait a minute, it was supposed to be all bus traffic on the drive, you know, and it's it's. If I'm gonna go by this for saying cars are coming in, then it I wouldn't play both sides of the fence and say, well, but we'll we'll do this, we'll do that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and I and I think we're able to go back and reference those. Communications because. Problems about this.
Sure, absolutely.
Prior to COVID, there was no. There was no complaints of residents on Bassett about backups, there was no complaints about people using it as a cut through. Uh there was no complaints of people using it to go in and for sporting, some special events, drop them off for basketball. Especially if people are uh living on the west side of Dover Center.
Hmm.
You're you're, yes, it it's a look for good drive, you're creating more of an X for some parents. When there wasn't a problem for them, the only reason we're even having discussions is we've made some changes because of COVID and.
Well, you know, what originally was done, the original change was done uh uh because of the construction up front.
Yes.
Was was the primary one that was there.
To keep to keep.
And and I think the error was, so we, when we had those conversations, we we typically don't like to do. Too many drop off pickup changes during a school week, and so a lot of times we and we commit and we said, and then and then it really. Uh really came to a head uh March one where we came back on it. So it was something where you could say, well, you know what, why didn't you just, you know, switch when when the construction was done, we didn't. And 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 it's not something we did, so I think the the problem is is, I think, less of a COVID problem. And more of a decision that we made when we were doing construction.
Yeah.
And and that's that's what I think is probably a more fair representation.
So but so so just reiterating on that, we didn't have a problem for that.
What we weren't, now, so I'll I'll put that, I'll I'll slice that differently to where um I wasn't getting phone calls before. There there may be people saying, no, 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 it was a problem, we just.
I remember one complaint when there was construction and uh people were using it as a cut through and. Uh that was what, three, four years ago, I I remembered that, but it wasn't a lot.
Yeah, I think I think one of the challenges that the lizard would have some product is that coaming of the buses and cars, and I think we're addressing that, and I think that's great that we're addressing that. Um I'm just not sure that. Doing all of the. The investment in gates, especially automated gates, uh. Is that's is necessary and necess- and is it necessary to eliminate, try to change behavior? Um for people that go to any, it's not even the sporting events, but. Anyone who has uh drop off their kids, the gym is right there in the back versus in the front.
Instead of having them walk through the whole school.
Yeah, they could still drop off and back, they would just enter through the front.
But then are are you gonna have that automated gate there, right?
But then you have this automated gate right here and and.
So I think the piece that that Dr. Gagnon is is saying here, that gate at the front there, okay, would work opposite from the ones in the back. When the back are closed, okay, the one up front will be open. So when the back is closed on nights, weekends.
Sure.
All that, this front gate is open all the time. And then when the back is open for drop off and pickup, this one will close.
I I guess my mind mind is more of uh. And again, any any family that lives west of Crawford.
Right.
Okay. They love going down Bassett and coming in the back and dropping off, you know, if they have.
If they have. I'm gonna jump on here with this, um especially when it is like a full grade for parents, like parent information night. Or special ceremonies. or special ceremonies. You're going to be having roughly, you know, two hundred to four hundred cars coming in and they're going to have to park in the back for those occasional times. I understand sports events, it's much lower number, but being able to open that back road for those types of special events, those very unique special events that only happen a handful of times a year. It would really help because otherwise you're just going to have a huge traffic jam up in the front.
Well, I think the point behind it is to balance. And that's one of the things that we want to do is, is balance this campus. And, and you know what? And the other thing we actually could do is we could open um, the, the bus area also. And, and because we would paint lines on there and that would be special event parking as well. So you'd be able to enter in both of those entrances up front. So the, here's, here's my point. Is I think in this layout that we're looking, and one of the things that we really need to talk about moving forward with is, um, these two areas, the, the two primary areas here of, these are the big construction items. The, the bus parking area and this connection right here.
Yeah, that's, I, I need to, to labor the, the Basset Road because I'm, I'm more interested actually in what Barb had said too is the, what, what are the flaws, what are the flaws for the student flow?
Right.
And how are they going to flow and how are they, how are we going to keep cars away from them?
Yeah, so, and that's a part here. And, and, and so when we're looking at student flow, um, I showed you pedestrians and walkers going, um, uh, southwest.
Flow from the buses.
Student flow from the buses, what we'd be looking at here is, I said in the morning, we could potentially have, um, the buses coming in from, from this area and lining up and dropping off. Now, what's not on here is where the sidewalk's going to be, is we are going to have a sidewalk that would, um, connect from this lot to this sidewalk. Okay, now conversations about gates, you know, one of the things that we have here are the cones. And we kind of like the cones because if something does happen, then we can lift those up and then have people kind of pull off and, and, and go out of there. So when it comes to this gate, does this gate go here? Does this gate go here? I, I'm not sure. This is, like I said, a, a proposal through there. And when we get the placement of the sidewalk, um, this gate area may change. So once we get that placement of the sidewalk, but what would happen would be, um, you would have, mine just disappeared. So you would have the buses come in, drop off along this side. And then, um, students would then walk to the sidewalk and either go into uh, the middle school or into the intermediate school. So that, that's, that's their path.
And I think we all, we all know that.
Yeah.
We don't want the kids bothering leaving through cars.
No, and, and what's nice is, you know, we had conversations about how, um, this, this bus parking lot is not right next to DIS. But one of the things about DIS is even when you look at the back, you know, and, and I mentioned before, if a student is dropped off here, they're taking a pretty long walk to get in, into their area. And this is actually shorter. So this is probably about five hundred feet. I mean, it's not, I mean, we're looking at a top view of a map, but when you actually go there and walk it, it's really not a, a far walk. So we're not too concerned about, you know, if we put the, the bus lot there, if, um, um, if we're going to have issues with students having to walk too far. The, the, um, so yeah, that's, that would be the path for there.
What kind of construction are you putting, um, the other, the other part?
Here? Here?
The
At the south turn?
A what?
At that south turn?
Yeah, so that's just going to be a a, a turn going into the parking lot.
Yes, right now that goes straight through to where it would go like to the bus lot.
Right.
That would create a curve so the cars could exit out through the back of the parking lot.
Okay.
Either a gate or cone.
Yes.
What does the city say about this? Have they?
We sat down with the, uh, uh, the city engineer. And one of the things, it, it's, it is, the simpler the better. You know, one of the, when we look back on the designs that we were talking about last year, um, one of our biggest concerns at the time and one of the biggest concerns that we revisited again is that we felt like we were almost creating, um, either movie theater or Cedar Point weight lines on a campus with cars. And, you know, they would be going around turnstiles and what would that look like in winter? And, and so as we reviewed the different plans, the nice thing with this is it's essentially the same thing we've been running since two thousand eleven. It's, it's the, it's the same thing we've been running since two thousand eleven. We're just separating the buses. All we are essentially doing, when you look at this design, if you were to take off all the arrows, you know, and, and just look at the physical structures that are there, I'll tell you, this parking lot is here today. This entrance is here today. This road is here today. Um, over here, this is all here today. This is here today. The only thing, the only two things on here that are not would be this and this, and our gates.
I think separating the buses will have a dramatic impact on car flow.
I think dramatic.
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah, I, I do too. It'll be dramatic.
And even when you think about, if you get back to this space here, even if you look at this space here, when you look at this particular space and what that does, I mean, you had at least four intersections happening of vehicles.
And you really have to have a nice person that's coming in like that.
Yeah. So so I
On the bus, uh, parking lot, would the playground still be able to stay there?
We actually talked about that. And in that drawing, we do not see the playground. And, and that's something where it's a, it's a preliminary drawing. Um, I, and, and that is, that is something that we looked at is whether or not would impact that, that playground.
Okay.
So I don't quite know that yet, but that is a, a part of the discussion. Because we know it's right behind there.
In the automatic, automated gates, um, there's an emergency vehicle override to be able to open them, if I remember correctly, from the elementary school?
Yes, that's correct. And, and so that is something, and that's something we already, that's another nice thing with it is we've already worked with the city on the elementary. And, and I, and it would be, um, uh, accessible for them as well. And, and those, those, not that you want them to drive through it, you know, but if they really need to, they can. And, and it'll, it'll break.
I think there's some procedural things, especially for evening and a special event kind of things that need to be figured out. But overall, for the day to day drop off pickup, I think this handles a lot of the issues. Um, what about particularly, I, you know, and, uh, Mr. Kraft brought this up. I know there's crosswalks further down on Basset, but also crossing guards and some signage on Basset Road for at least, nothing, you know, big and flashy, but just at least a LBMS drop off or pick up a drop off or something.
So we'd have to talk more about the crossing guards, but one of the things we did talk about is whether or not, um, that area would be designated a school zone. And I learned something about school zones that I didn't know is that your school zone is only as wide as your frontage on that road. So when you, when you look at, so, no, seriously. So we, so when you, when you drive in front of our frontage, uh, over Westlake Elementary School or, or
It's mine.
In front of it, you, you have, you know, you have a wider school zone. And if, if we were to try and designate, um, an area back there as an official school zone, it, it would be like a speed trap, you know, it'd be like, you know, sixty feet.
It's around twenty-five miles per hour back.
Right, but, but one of the things we talked about though is, um, and actually Councilman Donald brought this up with our very first conversation months ago, actually, when we were talking about it. And, uh, we, I think you and I were talking about signs with him. And, um, and his response was, once you get your long-term plan in place, we'll put the signs up, right? And, and the reason for it, which made sense, you know, he's like, I don't want to put signs up and then take them down and be changing them out. So once you guys get, you know, your long-term plan in place, we'd be happy to put the signs up. So it, you know, it would be some sort of marker indicating that there is a school nearby, whether it's the sign that, that designates school so that people know to look or anything like that. But doing an actual school zone, uh, is like something that it would be silly back there.
I think it's overdone.
It would be overdone. I think the flashers and the twenty miles an hour would be overdone. But like Councilman Donald said, if we want to put up, you know, signs indicating that, that there's a school in the area or something that, then
The, uh, the crosswalk like we have on Clay Road for Clay Park. Uh, the, uh, crosswalk lights when you're there and you want to cross.
Yeah, that would be something that we would, that would probably be on us, really with the funding. Yeah, yeah, I understand that would be ours. So that's one of the things that is a part of our proposal. Thank you.
So how soon do we implement?
That's a question I also had, um, you know, what's the preliminary, preliminary timing and also very costs?
Okay, so preliminary timing. Um, let me see if there's anything else I want to share in these designs. Um, I think one of the things that, that was a question that was made and, and, um, I want to just mention is as we stage things in, if we get to a point where, um, the, the, the parking, the bus parking area is not completed by the start of the school year, we can go back to what we did before. We can go back to this design from two thousand eleven and run it until, um, because we're not working on the same site. We'd be working off on, on the Dover site. And anything else that I wanted to point out about this? Um, let me look at it. I don't think there is. I'll switch back to my presentation because the last thing I wanted to mention was, uh, next steps. So, uh, Dover Camp proposal, I mentioned that. So next steps. So the, what I've been sharing with you have been, it, it went from a Dave Kossovar design, uh, which was, was very good, but not nearly something that we can, um, build off of. And then it led to our engineers taking Dave's design and, uh, making it better, like BASF. Um, and that's what they did with that. So we need detailed drawings. And there, um, uh, will be a process involved in working with those drawings. Fortunately, we've been working with Icon and we have a GMP with them already. And they're going to be, they just finished our Dover project. They're still working with us to take down Basset project, or the Basset building. And they can bid on our behalf. So we can take what we want to do and go to bid, uh, when we get the detailed drawings in place and get some of the process going. Then we, in Westlake, would review and award bids based upon cost, timeline, contractor qualifications, reputation, all the different type of things you consider when, uh, you're, um, accepting a bid. Um, and we would look at an aggressive timeline. Uh, I put timeline in the bid package for a reason, you know, because it is something where we would want, uh, whoever receives the award to be aware of our timeline. Our goal, um, we would, our, our goal, we would love to have it for the start of the year. That's what we'd love to have. That's a very aggressive goal. Um, I don't know if it's a realistic goal, but we know that to do it, we would also have to have it done early fall. Because like we talked about in October is when we want to stop, uh, working with concrete at that point as well. If, uh, as I mentioned at the beginning, um, uh, if, if we do go back and it's not completed, um, we would then revert to the design, the two thousand eleven design until it's completed. In regard to how much it would cost, we have very
Yes, through this process, we'd be working with city boards and commissions
Correct.
to get through all the appropriate
Yep, that's, then we'd be doing that as well. Um, so when it comes to the cost, we asked our engineers for a very high level type of, um, uh, cost that we would see. And they guessed, I, I think we're falling around four hundred, five hundred thousand uh, to complete what we want to complete. Which if you recall, um, the previous designs create with the one entrance completing serpentine type of things was one point five million. So it is significantly different, keeping it simple. And like I said, I think what it does is going back through this presentation. I think when we look at this, we do keep Dover Center entrance as the primary entrance. Both bus and car vehicles are coming in. Basset entrance is going to take on the vehicle traffic it was designed for and will work to limit that traffic as well.
The good news is, is that once the bus lot does get done, there really won't be much change for the parents.
No.
It's really just pulling the buses out of the main entrance.
No, and I, and John, that, that I think is one of the best points is because in, unless we really start to back up Dover Center and we have to go to a stacking type of thing, the parents would be going from dropping off students in the inner part with the parking in the front to being able to pull right up to the sidewalk.
And I think they'll actually prefer that.
I would.
I know, I would, yeah.
Yeah, and then the back would stay the same. So.
Can we add to this, uh, next steps, a, a meeting with the Basset, Basset Road residents?
Sure.
Thank you.
What, what would be, you have more next steps?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
That's, I will stop and let you go.
Well, then I guess my, my question would be is, you know, for us as a board, what is, what is the next step that we would want to take is, I'm, I'm just going to say, it sounds like there's consensus that this all makes lots of sense. Yeah, I'll mention that with regard to gates, um, we want to be certain, as Dr. Goggins suggested, that we're honoring past commitments. Um, as, as well as we want to be a good neighbor. And I think about those gates. And, um, I like the idea of the gates. I think the gates make sense. I know we touched on, um, are we, are we indeed hearing from residents? And, uh, we are hearing more from residents now. Uh, but we have heard from residents in the past with regard to a traffic occurring at different times. And I know that the residents, um, would appreciate, um, again, sticking with our commitment as well as being a good neighbor. And I think the gates are a good part. It, it would be good as we, as the proposal is developed, that, uh, if we can obviously carve out that as a, as a separate thing, so you can see exactly what kind of cost. Because my, mine is, is, is the cost really going to justify the goodwill? And or a problem that we think we have, that, that's harsh. It may be my misunderstanding. I'm, I'm thinking four to five hundred thousand is a part of that, but it'd be interesting to know, you know, what, what, what is it separating? Yeah, especially if it's an extra fifty thousand to run wiring, uh, and everything out to the Basset, uh, gate. And again, the nice thing I like about the gates is even though if they are there and if we ever decide, we can just open them whenever we want. So if we decide that, hey, there really isn't an issue for convenience, we're going to leave them open. So I mean, that is the, the option that always has. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm more opposed to, uh, I don't want to overspend.
Is there somewhere we can find out some history, um, with some of the gates? Because I know when it was originally developed, uh, the new Lee Bernison, um, the gates were being locked, then they were not being locked. And I know there was construction at one point, which became, uh, when, uh, cars were cutting through, so the gates were being locked again. The other thing I would, uh, want to do a little bit of, or was wondering about is I know we keep the front doors of LBMS locked starting at four o'clock, so everybody has to enter the back way. Um, would it be worth looking at, should we, um, leave those front doors and have people enter and exit that way for, um, sporting events, those types of things? Just some things to think about. I'm not looking for answers today.
Well, I don't like the idea of them walking, having to walk through the store though, when in the back, the gym's right there.
So when I look at, and, and I go back through, and like I said, we found um, documents that were shared with parents when it was open. And this is one that again indicated here where we talked about, this was still new seven eight building. This was the old Lee Bernison. And, um, the communications we were sending out were these gates. And, and this was, this was, and obviously sometimes drop off and pickup changes. Like you can change your daily schedule and, and, but at the time, when the buildings were opening, these were the windows. So it's like these gates are going to stay open from seven AM to eight forty-five. And then in the afternoon from two thirty to four thirty, which would get the majority of your traffic that would, that happened during your school day off. Um, and then when you look here, it's from seven, closed from seven AM to eight forty-five and two thirty to four thirty. Um, and then when you look here, it's from seven, closed from seven AM to eight forty-five and two thirty to four thirty. So that's what was communicated with parents back, um, along with the other things I shared before.
And, and again, I'll add on to that, that, you know, that was going underneath some assumptions that they were probably making. Now we have true ten years of history of how flow had been working. And, and again, I go back to pre-construction, there really wasn't a, a major issue other than separation of the buses before we're currently addressing.
Well, we're, so where you're right is that when you look at, uh, and, and a good example is the, the, if I was to look back on planning commission meetings for a baseball field, you know, they may build the baseball field and then decide fifteen years later that the baseball field needs lights. And it's like, wow, but you didn't say there was going to be lights. Well, now we need them. So I'm not saying, but what I would do, what, what I would do in this situation, what I would recommend you do is you start here. You go in and you say, listen, you know what? This is what we said we were going to do back in two thousand eleven. This is what we're going to do. And, and then if we find that, you know, um, boy, you know, having the event that Liz talked about, you know, you know what I mean? It's one in there. I would, I would default to this, to be kind of more closed as opposed to saying, ah, you know what? Let's put the gates in, but let's leave them. I wouldn't, I would, I would default to, we'll follow this and then, then we'll talk about if anything goes after that.
You actually brought a good point to my head. Again, I'm, I'm sort of opposed because we have gates today. So, but if, if maybe we were able to do everything in, in two phases, and I can't think that the gate would be too much of a, of a deferment from the main project, which is basically the parking, uh, and everything. It will really have to be much, uh, uh, nothing else other than the parking, you could, uh, change the drive curve, it's like that. You do that and then you give it a year and, and you see how the traffic flow works. You see that, are there any issues, are there any complaints? And, and then make your decision because again, for ten years, people basically have had free flow of going in and back for sporting events, for school events, for all of those types of things. And to stop that, I, I think would create more angst to the parents who are important to us as a speed.
I, I hear that. And, and so I would, what I would want to do is move forward with this and, and cost out those gates because I do believe that the gates are a big part of this. And, and I, and so, um, let's.
The gates are not in this cost of.
No, I think they are. Well, no, I mean, I, I would, I would put them in because it was, um, we, the, the different, and believe me, that was not a quote.
Okay, okay.
That was a, that was a, okay, well, you probably have X amount of concrete and X amount of this.
That's an engineer, it, it engineers thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And, and gates, the automated gates, my understanding are not that expensive.
What we could ask Icon to do is in the bid package, we bid the work and then have it as an alternate so that it would be, uh, priced out of a certain amount. And then the board, board could just accept the bid and alternate, then it's combined and, and the work's done or not to, it's up to you. But I don't think you're, it's not going to cut it in half by any.
No.
That's not, you know.
No, mine is more of that. I mean, it's part of its cost, but I know you're right. It's creating inconvenience to parents or one, one hasn't in the last ten years. That's, that's.
Well, I think we just need to re-educate them. Um, and I, and I don't think it's that much of an issue. I tried.
You lived on the west side.
Well, but, okay. When I first went into the elementary school, it's much easier for me to go in the back way, the turn at West Town because I live right off of Dover Center. So I turned down West Town and I went to turn in and there's all these gates. I thought, oh my gosh, I can't get in this way. So I had back around, go all around, go all around the front. And now I do it every time because I know I can't get in the back. And it's like, it's not that much of an inconvenience. It's just a retraining, John.
Yeah, but again.
It's not like going miles away.
Let's do the opposite. We'll, we'll put it in as an alternate and take it from there. Any other questions that I can?
I don't have any other questions.
What can you, but I mean, how soon can we get started?
I think Bob asked about that.
Yeah.
I did. Didn't I talk about that?
I thought you did.
Yeah, you did. So we, what we're, we're, we're in the process already.
Okay.
We have the engineer, this is the first set of drawings, uh, uh, it sounds like we have consent to the board. Our next step will be work with Icon, like Scott had put out there, Dr. I had put out there. Um, and we'll work with them to get those M G P D, to get the detailed drawings. We're already working with, you know, the city, uh, and the commission. So we're rolling along. This is not something, uh, that we're holding back at all and, uh, we're going to do it as expeditiously as possible. Uh, our goal, I think our, our goal would be for the start of the school year. That may be a difficult goal to achieve, but that's, we're working on that.
It's a target we set. Yeah.
So is there an estimate as when, uh, maybe someone would be brought to us to give approval? I know, I mean, there's.
It's not going to happen at the June thirtieth meeting. I can assure you of that. Uh, so I would right now, and, and we'll reach out to Icon. We may be able to target, uh, the July nineteenth meeting. And we do have a July twelfth, so if it comes in earlier.
Right.
Yeah, great. We could present it at the twelfth, but you know, I would hope that we could, uh, target for the nineteenth right now.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
None.
Okay, that was a great discussion. So, uh, let's move on to next. We've got, uh, board committee reports. And the first one up is the legislative report.
Only thing I have is ongoing conversations about, uh, school funding and, um, trying to get that passed. And I apologize, I don't know what's happened in the last day or two with that, just because of my schedule, but it's continuing.
Okay, uh, next item is student achievement liaison.
At the end of the year, there's so much to celebrate, right? Uh, with regard to student achievement, much of our celebrations to this point has involved, uh, really this entire room. Uh, celebrating graduation, honors, grade advancement and annual celebrations. I'll focus attention on a couple of firsts when it comes to student achievement. This year, Mr. Scott Cuts planned and executed the first ever Westlake High School Technology and Engineering Signing Day Assembly. The Technology and Engineering Department recognized the graduating seniors as they pursue a post-secondary technology and engineering major. It also celebrated the many talents, capabilities, aspirations, accomplishments of these future architects, engineers, designers, makers, technicians, artisans and problem solvers.
And they had the, um, uh, some of the previous students.
They did.
Wes, like a lot of them, and they, they were wonderful, I thought, the advice that they gave to the kids.
I, I took some of that advice myself. So it was very helpful news. And I know our graduating students will as well. Uh, next Tabitha Devine and Rebecca Sawchik planned and executed Westlake High School's best buddies' first ever friendship walk. Students walked in unity and inclusivity to spread the word that everyone should have a friend and no one is alone. Students and staff worked hard and came together for an outstanding friendship event. Thank you.
And the next, uh, report is from the policy committee.
I got a second read, second read, uh, at the end of this month. We have policies that are sent to you and we'll read them again and vote them on at the end of this month.
Very good. Uh, the next report is the finance audit committee.
Mr. Fanuken and I met with our treasurer and their superintendent. Uh, the finance committee met last week. It was last week, right? Seems like it was a couple of years ago. Finance committee met last week reviewing a forecast that we have all seen, uh, as well as we discussed expected federal funds. We're all aware that in this very unusual and unpredictable year, uh, we've seen some unexpected deficits. We've seen some unexpected surpluses. As we see, uh, these in particular, uh, we're making a determination, uh, with a review of Mr. Hopkins at the end of our fiscal year, which is very, very soon, uh, to take a look at these numbers to determine, is this the new normal? Or is it something unusual? Uh, we're going to continue to monitor and discuss and bring those to the board's detection.
So following up with that.
Yeah.
Uh, as we've, as we stated before, if we choose to go to the ballot, it would be, uh, two resolutions before, uh, August. So, uh, my goal would be, uh, as our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, uh, at that July twelfth board meeting, we would be able to, uh, uh, bring the, the, uh, final information from the fiscal year to the, uh, Board of Education there and, uh, uh, either give a recommendation to the board, uh, to move forward or, um, you know, choose, uh, not to make a recommendation, uh, based on what, what Mr. Craft had said, our, our, uh, uh, cash balances, uh, some in, uh, information from the, uh, federal funding, uh, different pieces like that. Our goal as a district, as a board of education, uh, is the transparency and integrity and fiscal responsibility to our community. So we want to find that right time, um, and not go to the community before it's, um, it's absolutely needed. So we'll have more information in the next, you know, thirty days or so. And, uh, we'll be able to bring final information to the board, um, at that July twelfth board. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? I mean, next up is the curriculum committee.
We met at the high school. I can't remember what day it was. Um, and, uh, we, we went and we, uh, so to, um. Scott, yes. Yeah, that was May what? I don't remember. Earlier May, second week in May. And, and unfortunately, most of the kids and teachers were gone, so we spent time talking to Mr. Cuts. And the interesting thing he said is that they were going to have a group at the farmer's market at Crocker Park on Saturdays, um, for the kids to sell some of their stuff. How, how did that go? We didn't.
Great. You know, I walked by and they had a good crowd by their, um, by their tent and, uh, bought some coasters with the demon on it. A lot of good stuff. And they also have keychains. So I don't know if you've seen these, but the little, uh, demon keychains as well.
Oh.
So they have these guys.
So it sounds like it went.
Some good stuff.
Good, good. Um, so we just had an interesting talk with him about everything that's going on. And Liz, you want to?
No, I think that kind of covers it all. It was a good conversation and, you know, it's always fun to see what's going on in the tech department.
Yes.
Okay, the last, uh, report is from community outreach committee.
I think we've all had an opportunity to reach out to, uh, uh, the overall, uh, community. Um, I think, uh, one of the more memorable events was, uh, joining, uh, everyone else in the city on the Memorial Day Parade, where our marching band performed. It's great to be at a parade again throughout the city. Um, it was great to hear some very, very, very positive, uh, praise, uh, to our leadership, uh, with, uh, the incredible job that you've done. Um, it was, uh, heartwarming. It really was, uh, just people generally very impressed with, uh, the great work that everyone in this room and their entire staff has done. So it was a great community event.
I will add on to, uh, the fact that, uh, Dr. Goggins and myself, we had the opportunity to participate with the mayor and at the request of Westlake Baseball League to, uh, officially open up the fields of, uh, Clay Memorial Park.
I threw a strike, by the way.
You got it over hopefully.
I did, yeah.
Mine was a little.
Oh man, I think the catcher, he framed it well. Tiffany Tucker's son caught for me and he did a tremendous job. I mean, it was, it may have been a little outside, but he framed it and brought it back in.
He's already caught a ball from Captain Vogel.
It was, um, very well put together and, uh, I, I do see, uh, Westlake Baseball League doing lots of, uh, very, very good things. They've done many good things over the years, uh, and they've also had very good relationships with schools. Um, and especially as a, uh, feeding program to high schools. So it was really good to be able to be part of that and, uh, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I bought a cool hat. I don't know if you saw those hats they had with the state of Ohio with the W on it. That's a cool one.
Okay, uh, the last item is any gen, general board comments.
Um, I want to, Pony, uh, Mr. Kraft said about the parade, if you don't mind. Um, and to continue the fun of the parade, Fourth of July parade is coming up. Um, if anybody would like to participate, um, I, since I, Mr. Kraft might be out of town, I think I'm the point person for that. Um, and also the, I think I might have Dr. Stole involved in the parade, please.
Oh.
I think you'll be allowed to.
The Corvette.
I'll donate, I'll, I'll drive the, our convertible.
Nice.
So that we can, two convertible, two red cars, red convertibles for.
And I'll bring the candy.
I do, uh.
No candy.
Yeah, I do have a trunk full of candy that we were unable to, uh.
How did that go? The kids didn't retaliate by not getting.
Everyone is very understanding, uh, but I do, I do have quite a bit of candy, uh. Ms. Perrinach, should I deliver that to you?
Uh, not this week, um, otherwise you're giving it to my husband who's probably watching the live stream right now. And he might be like, eh, it's a ton of candy. So, um, it's.
Dr. Goggins said I could drop it off here.
Yep, Mr. Maymore and I will guard it.
The other thing I wanted to add on, thinking, you know, between coming out of COVID and, um, starting of the new school year and especially with starting this new, uh, our, our athletic conference and being able to compete with our, you know, neighboring school districts, you know, what, you know, let's start thinking about ways to help bring school spirit and, you know, the whole enjoyment and excitement of the home games and the spirit rally. I know W Dab is talking about, I believe it's August eleventh is when they're shooting for that date. Um, I've already talked to W Dab and, uh, Mrs. Matu and we're hoping to be walking with them. Um, or, you know, near them in the parade. Um, but you know, what can we do to help encourage school spirit? Whether it's, you know, Fridays, wear Westlake green or getting the athletes to, you know, wear jerseys on game days. You know, what can we do to help, you know, these conversations and kind of try to start encouraging that school spirit? You know, the we are Westlake excitement again, because I know it's been a very difficult year and a half with COVID, but let, like, let's find ways to drum up the excitement again.
Okay, um, I continue to get, um, parents' positive comments about commencement at our high school stadium. They absolutely loved it and hope that we can continue having it there because that they just felt more of a, it's, it's local. They don't have to worry about the parking, driving down to Cleveland. It's familiar to the kids after the ceremonies, when everybody congregated and took pictures. I don't know, you were a parent of graduates.
Very, yeah.
They loved it. They loved it. And so I strongly hope that we can encourage this maybe to continue and do like Mr. Wilson did. He had a rain day, you know, and watched the weather and, and I thought it worked out fine.
Yeah, I, I personally like to commend Mr. Wilson's administration. Counselors, uh, Mr. Quozar staff, I mean, it all came together very, very well. Uh, considering it even a little bit kind of delayed there, uh, because of the weather and we had that opportunity, but I have, I, I received tons of, tons of very, very positive, um, comments about it. And, uh, it was sad, uh, Mr. Wilson, this will be his last graduation, uh, as the principal there. But it was glad, I was glad that it went off without a hitch and, uh, I think it was very well received by the lots.
Yeah.
Just, uh, the, the planning, obviously, but you mentioned a group that a lot of times do not get mentioned. And that's our maintenance crew. You know, who did you have out there, Dave? So we can actually.
We, we had, we had Bob Conway, Brian Doherty, Jeff Faylor, um, Paul Brusk, Rob Baird.
Yeah, so these folks.
Tim Hyman.
And Tim Hyman. These folks and, and, uh, Paul Wilson sent me a screenshot of, um, the stadium cameras. And if you recall, the, um, weather as they were trying to set up, they were, they were setting up in a downpour. And, and so those folks, uh, went out and they had to go do it again because the wind, you know, blew a lot over. But I'll tell you what, they deserve a lot of credit and it is something that we've had a lot of conversations about. So it is something that is in discussion about what we do next year. And it's not off the table, but it's not set in stone.
Well, I, I mean, the, the parents really did like it. I would just suggest that the kids be turned around facing the. Well, I, I mean, the parents really did like it. I would just suggest that the kids be turned around facing the parents. And then the, the stage would be, you know, in between the parents and the, and the kids. Uh, I thought the standing obation that the parents gave to the kids was just downright awesome. I've never seen that happen before. Pretty cool.
And my kids, right?
Any other comments from any of the board members? Okay, well, I just, I just wanna quickly, uh, before we close, just say that, uh. You know, the plan was well thought out on the, on the school district as far as the traffic. Um, you know, it's not finalized and set in stone, but we, we've definitely uh done our homework. And uh, we've got a plan to move forward and hopefully it'll happen uh very quickly. And it sounds like, you know, the board will be able to approve this in the next month or so or a little bit less and then we can move forward. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Adjourn at seven fifty-one PM, correct?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Losinski?
Yes.
Perrinak?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.